Good morning and welcome. We will call this meeting to order and with us today is my friend, the Reverend Dr. Kevin Graham, who was invited to provide us with an invocation for this morning. So please join us. Immediately following, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. This is the day that the Lord has made. We come to rejoice and be glad in it, even though it's cold. Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day that you have blessed us with. Lord, even in the spirit of Muddle of the King, on yesterday, we ask that you would continue to carry that spirit of unity and love and peace within the Wichita community. We ask your blessing now, Lord, upon our new mayor and the entire council, as they all begin a new term. Let your spirit be within all that they say and do, that they might move this city forward, and that you would bless all of the departments of the city, all of our first responders, our paramedics, our police officers, our firemen. Well, we just ask that you would be with them and keep this city safe, and bless us to be a city that prospers in 2020. It's in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray, and ask it all, let God's people say, amen. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be appropriate at this time to make a motion to approve the minutes for January 20, I guess, January 14, 2019. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes? See none, I move the acceptance of the minutes.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Quick, roll open the roll. Motion passes unanimously. All right, onward to the proclamation. We have a proclamation today for announcing today as National Day of Racial Healing. So would Mr. Meiskins come to the podium, please?
So it's with great honor that I have my friend Reverend Meiskins with me, and I will read the proclamation, word for word, hopefully without making any mistakes. It's a proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas we all have witnessed racial divisiveness rising in America's urban, rural, suburban, and travel communities today, which threaten the very core of this great country's unified front. And whereas, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country and maintain communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed, and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias while building an equitable and just society. And whereas, children should have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments which do not violate their safety, dignity, and humanity. And whereas, each person has the capability to make a simple change from within which can have a profound effect on the entire society by dedicating themselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can bring the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force where racial bias will become a thing of the past. And whereas, racial healing is vital and critical commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of our children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, and with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim January 21, 2020, as the National Day of Racial Healing in Wichita, and ask our community, in conjunction with others throughout the United States of America, to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually, as a means of working together to ensure the best quality of life for every child.
Mr. Meiskins.
Yes. I think we should be then reminded that tonight, today is National Day of Racial Healing, but tonight, the City of Wichita, Global Faith in Action, and the Beyond Tolerance Movement are planning to discuss what we can do as a community to help address the racial issues we face on a daily basis. Tonight, January 21 at 6 o'clock, let's all get together and discuss how we, the city and community, respectfully deal with the racial issues we face each day. Tonight, 6 o'clock, say it again, let's share some food together, hear from some of our community leaders, their thoughts and possible action steps, and join together in dialogue how we can create a great city that recognizes the beauty of each person. So 6 o'clock at the Mid-American All-Indian Center, come tonight.
Howard C. Hutchison, Jr., Vet-to-Vet Support Command.
Good morning. How you doing?
Well, surviving my first week, so I feel like I'm doing pretty good.
Let me see if I can help you a little bit.
I just asked that you pull the mic just a little forward so that we make sure the people watching on television can hear. Thank you.
You bet. I'm Howard Hutchison, Jr. I reside at 9932 West Yosemite Court, Wichita, Kansas, 63, and I'm here to bring the mayor and the city council members up to date on the latest with the Vet-to-Vet Support Command, Inc., and the Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County. We became a 501(c)(5) February 15 of 2015, and we combined forces. Patty Neffco was the director at MHA, Mental Health Association of Southern Kansas, and of the com peer programs, and I was the chairman out to VA on their Independent Council, Behavioral Health, State Council for Behavioral Health, and I was looking for an opportunity to kind of further my experiences in the community, and I saw a flyer at Panera Bread, and it was a mentoring program, and I thought, boy, that's right up my alley. So I contacted Patty Neffco, and I ended up volunteering for the Mental Health Association underneath Patty Neffco's guidance for two years, and then after two years, we were kind of burst into seams as far as what we thought was available to veterans and resources in the community. And so we both, even though I was just a volunteer, we decided we was going to leave MHA, and so that's, like I said, that's when we founded the Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County. Our first meeting, we filled a conference room at MHA, and so we knew right then and there, we had to, you know, find a venue that would, that was larger. At the end of that particular meeting...
Tom Fletcher.
Yeah, Tom Fletcher was representing com care and a coalition that was already existent, but it didn't have the best attendance, and they didn't meet very often. So on that first day that I started the Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County, he turned the coalition over to me. He said, boy, you're doing a great job. And so on that day, that's when we became Cedric County. And since then, we have various programs for veterans.
Okay, and that is my key right there. Do I permission this because we have just one question?
He could defer the last two minutes to you, of course.
Perfect. You want to defer real quick and then wind it up? Yes or no?
I thought you'd be up here.
Okay, well, your name's on the agenda as well. So we're Patty Neffco, and thank you so much for having us. We are business partners, and we are friends, and we started this nonprofit together, Vet-to-Vet Support Command. The Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County falls under that nonprofit. We also host the Veteran Awareness Expo every year at the All-American Indian Center. Sure, hope you'll come, hope you'll come again. So one thing you do have, you have a packet of all of our information, up to date as of 2:00 a.m. I want you to know you have everything that we know, including an announcement we haven't even made publicly yet, but we're going to be the difference makers, award winners from Newman University, and we're pretty, that's all in your packet as well, and so stay tuned for that, and we'll get you more information. You also have a single piece of paper about homeless veterans statistics, which is a real hot topic right now, and we want you to know, this is from Luelis Sanders over at Continuum of Care from United Way, okay? And it's the point-in-time count numbers for 2018, and it'll go on to tell you all the statistics that you need. The good news is, I know that Officer Nate is here from the Hot Team, but we're doing a good job, we're doing a really good job in Wichita, Kansas, and Cedric County with our homeless veterans. So these statistics will show that of those that are in the hopper or by name on the HMIS list through United Way, and they're being housed, and they're, you know, you can read the numbers yourself here, you know, there were five unsheltered, you know, on that point-in-time count in 2018. So we're doing a really good job in that respect.
You bet. And then last year, from KPTS, at their homecoming banquet, we received the...
The Veteran Business of the Year Award.
Yes.
So you're in good hands, and so just to wind it up, Howard, you wanted to show this to them? This is a picture of your coalition?
This is a picture of, this is a picture of our coalition. Just before we opened up the doors, we're going into our fifth year at the All-American Indian Center, and we had over 1,000 people through the door last, or, yeah, last year, and our theme was McConnell Air Force Base, the year before was USS Wichita. But these are all the service providers that are in the coalition, and like I said, just before the doors opened up, we do a group picture, the doors open at 10, and...
And everything we do is free. We write grants, that's what we do for our business. Howard donates 100% of his time, and I donate almost 100, it seems like, but anyhow, everything we do is no cost to anyone, no dues, no membership dues. We do a lot. We serve over 250 veterans and direct services, 60 veteran providers in our coalition, and I'm going to add it up this year for you. You wait and see how many veterans our coalition serves when we add them all up. It's going to be crazy good.
We look forward to that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the coming today, and also for the work you do in our community. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Take a look at these, you guys.
Yes, thank you for that.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Raymond.
He said what I was.
Oh. Ologies?
Consent agenda items 1 through 10.
On a consent agenda, are there questions from the bench to staff? Is there discussion from, from the gallery? Bring discussion back to the bench. It's appropriate to make a motion. I move acceptance of consent agenda items 1 through 10?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussions? See none. Rolls are open. You may vote. The vote result is unanimous, and the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Economic Development Grant to Passageways.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of council, Scott Rea with the City Manager's Office here. We are seeking, we've been working with Passageway and with Wichita State University on analysis. We are still conducting that analysis, so we're asking for a council's deferment to February 4. We believe we will have the information at that time ready to bring forward. So stand for any questions.
Questions? Confrey? See none? It's, I'm not sure whose district it is, so...
He's not here.
He's not here, okay. I guess I'll make a motion. Then I make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussions? See none. Rolls will be open. Amendments may cast their vote. Result is unanimous, and the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing and request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds, MWCB LLC, NetApp Incorporated.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the city's Office of Economic Development for the record. The request before you today is a request for issuance of a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for MWCB LLC for the benefit of NetApp. MWCB LLC is a local development group with Ivan Crossland and Steve Barrett as its managing members. The group is proposing to build 168,000-square-foot building on the Wichita State University Innovation Campus for NetApp. NetApp is a data storage and management company that has its headquarters in Sunnyvale, California, and currently has its local facility at 37th Street North and Rock Road. MWCB is requesting a letter of intent in an amount not to exceed $33 million to build this project. The project will benefit from a sales tax exemption from the issuance of bonds, as well as a property tax abatement. Those benefits will accrue to NetApp. In addition to the $33 million that MWCB is projecting to invest, NetApp itself is looking to invest another $17 million in new equipment, as well as additional tenant improvements beyond what MWCB is doing. So we're looking at a total capital investment of approximately $50 million. MWCB is intending as well to acquire the NetApp facility at 37th Street North and Rock Road to be redeveloped. NetApp is desiring to be on the Innovation Campus to further develop its research and development relationship with the Wichita State University Engineering School. Currently, NetApp employs 80 to 90 WSU students on an annual basis, and approximately one-third of its workforce comes from Wichita State. It is looking to develop its future workforce, and this project demonstrates a long-term commitment to Wichita by NetApp. This is an aerial of Wichita State's entire campus, with 21st Street on the top of the aerial, 17th Street on the bottom of the aerial, you have Hillside on the left, and Oliver on the right. You can see approximately the right half of this aerial is the Innovation Campus. This is just a zoomed-in portion of that, where you can see 17th Street on the south and Oliver on the right-hand side, and you can see the large blue building is the building that would be the new NetApp headquarters in Wichita. These are just some of the images to show you what the building would look like. This is looking back to the south and to the east toward 17th and Oliver. This would be the entrance of the building, and we'll just kind of move around the building to look at some of the different aerials of what this would look like. This is looking to the west from the east side of the building, and then that's back towards the front again of the building. The company currently has 500 direct employees, as well as 128 contract employees. It is projecting it will add at least 45 net new jobs over the next five years at an average annual salary in excess of $100,000 a year. Therefore, the company qualifies for a 100% property tax abatement on a five-plus-five-year basis. The estimated value of a property tax abatement, 100% property tax abatement, based on a $33 million investment, if we assume that that's appraised at 80% of that amount, since we rarely see a dollar-for-dollar increase, is approximately $773,000 a year, with the city's portion being approximately $215,000. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to the city of 1.18 to 1, 1.1 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 1.37 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Considering that we're not quite to the target of 1.3 to 1, there are additional considerations the city council can consider when looking at approving a project on that basis. One is if the project is in a target industry, which technology is a target industry for our community. In addition, the total number of jobs, wages, and benefits created, as well as diversification of the regional economy, which again, technology is a diversification, and as well any job retention that is occurring. And again, we're retaining 500 direct jobs, as well as 128 contract jobs. Therefore, it's the staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing and adopt the resolution of intent and authorize the necessary signatures. Robin Huber, who is the general manager of the local facility, is here and can answer any questions about the company, and Steve Barrett is here on behalf of the development group. I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Questions for the staff?
Thanks, Mayor. Tim, I have one quick question. I know that our policy is typically a little more restrictive than the state. What does the state look for?
In terms of the cost-benefit analysis?
Yes, sir.
So on a property tax abatement, the state requires that we run a cost-benefit analysis to show the impact to all taxing jurisdictions. It does not require any specific amount. It does not require it to be positive. The 1.3 is a local policy requirement that the city council can make a determination if it wants to go a different direction, but the state does not have any requirement. Just you have to run a cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you.
Sir, with a follow-up to council member's question, in your presentation, the analysis for the state's was a 5.0821, which is quite higher than our local analysis. Would you care to just enlighten me on what the difference was?
The state's, in terms of the actual, yeah, that's just because they don't, you know, one of the impacts that we have is the property tax abatement. That's the biggest one that impacts us, that is not something that is much of an impact to the state. So that's why it's a much higher return for them typically.
Excellent. Further questions for staff? See none. We're opening up to the public. Welcome, sir, and good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership, 501 East Douglas. I'll be very brief. I just want to reinforce the need for diversification. You all know it very, very well, but as a reminder, because it might have been a few minutes since you've flipped through the Regional Growth Plan, that this project and this request is, could not be a more perfect example of expanding the IT systems and support sector of the Regional Growth Plan. Certainly, this community's talked a lot about diversification and the need for expanded presence in the IT sector. Certainly, the Chung Report did that. Project Wichita talked about it extensively, and many other groups have been talking about that for years, so much so that I think most of you are aware of flagshipkansas.tech, which is a kind of growing industry association that's just started here in Wichita and really spreads across the state. And they wouldn't speak about it themselves, but I'll brag on NetApp just a little bit, that Robin Huber, who's here today, is one of the founding members of that. He's been kind of fighting that cause and the need for a tech association in this area for a number of years, and so much so that NetApp sees our state and this community as a priority, that they are a leading, the leading sponsor for flagship. And flagship will really help this whole region and this state attract the IT workforce. Coincidentally, having this kind of a project, companies like NetApp making a further investment will do just that, will help us attract and recruit IT talent and other talents. So you all know that, but just wanted to reaffirm that and get a shout-out to NetApp for their investment in the community, which is, which is obviously very important. So would ask for your favorable consideration. Very much appreciate the opportunity to work with the company, your staff, and bond council. Certainly, the WSU team has been a huge partner in this, and the development team as well. So we thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? See none. Discussion will go back to the bench. Further comments, discussion, or questions? See none. I just want to thank... Oh, James, he popped up there. Chair recognized, Councilmember Clint Denon.
I just wanted to thank NetApp. Got to meet with them earlier on. Robin, thank you so much for the information you gave me. I appreciate your guys' decades-long commitment to the city of Wichita. I just think for my colleagues here, it's important to realize this does diversify things in a way. NetApp is already here, but it solidifies and grows their footprint in this community. Tech sector is something we want to grow here, in light of especially some of the recent layoffs. This is a pretty big win, if you ask me, for the city of Wichita, so I'll be supporting this today.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to echo Councilmember Clint Denon's comments about diversifying the economy. This is great, especially with our recent news. We've had this as a focus for some time to start diversifying our economy. We say this year after year, that Wichita needs to do a better job of it. It's kind of ironic that we're looking to a partner that's been in our community for over 25 years to help us start to do that even better. So thank you, NetApp. I'd also just like to thank staff for pointing out the mitigating circumstances that allow us to consider an item like this. We've always talked about the 1.3 to 1 return that we seek. It's not a mandate, and there are special circumstances, but when you look at the long-time commitment of NetApp, the diversification, and the well-paying jobs that this is going to put back into our economy, those are some direct, as well as indirect, benefits at a time that is sorely needed. So I'm very supportive of this and look forward to continued growth. Thank you.
Other members of the council. I'd like to just echo the thought of my colleague, where this is the right time to be invested in technology and to look inward towards NetApp and to be a part of your growth, I think it gives us a tremendous opportunity to steer us towards a diversification that we do need. Also, I'd like to thank not just the Wichita Partnerships, which is an organization of private sector leaders, but also the collaboration of Wichita State University in reaching out to ask those who are growing and diversifying our economy, what do you need to grow more, and bringing this to the council, particularly at a critical time. So thank you for that. And if there is no further questions, my list shows that there is none, then I would ask the debate stop and have the clerk open the roll. Oh, no, excuse me, we need a motion. We would ask that the district member, District 1, Councilmember Johnson, make the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo everyone else's thoughts. I won't repeat them because they said a lot of great things, but I will highlight that this is another benefit to Innovation Campus, allowing some applied learning for students, as well as building upon what USD 259 is doing right now in offering tech opportunities in coding in elementary schools, and this is a way for those young people to see a future in this industry as we really push to diversify our economy. So again, ditto to what the council member said, and I would move that we take staff's recommended action.
Chair seconds. Clerk, go open the roll. So remember, had a chance to vote. All votes are in, and the result is a unanimous passage. The motion passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Petition to amend the multi-sport stadium community improvement district.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the city council, Mark Elder here with the Office of Economic Development. The item for you today is a petition for amending a multi-sport, the multi-sport stadium CID that was approved back in January 4, and a request to set the public hearing on February 11 for this. So with that, a little bit of history on that, I mean, this district was established on January 4 of this year, and at that same meeting, the city council also adopted a development agreement with Riverfront Partners, LLC. And with that, following the adoption of that development agreement, the Riverfront Partners have signed a petition and requested to participate in this CID. The boundaries of the CID include city-owned property on both the East Bank and the West Bank, that include the stadium and Waterwalk. Bank that include the stadium and Waterwalk, the Ice Center, and First Waco. And the city's also expanding to include the property on Sycamore, just west of the stadium, that was part of that development agreement deal, as well as the Riverfront Partners property that is kind of more commonly called just the church property. There's also a parcel on the south end in blue here that is being requested to be removed from the district, and you can see on more like the north end there, the Sycamore property and the church property, or the Riverfront Partners property in red. And with that, the CID improvements remain very similar as far as they relate to the stadium, the river corridor, and surrounding area, the design construction of the multi-sport stadium, as well as the construction of site utilities improvements and the parking improvements. It does also include construction of public auditoriums and convention centers to allow for, if there are funds available and the design goes forward on Center 2 or performing arts on the East Bank, it now would allow that CID to contribute to that project. Again, here's a rendering of the stadium, and you can see on kind of the north end of that project that includes the Riverfront Partners property. The CID remains at 22 years with 2% sales tax. The city anticipates bonding $13 million worth of that, or at least using CID revenue to pay $13 million in bonds, and then that balance would be used as pay-as-you-go for projects. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions from the bench? Chair recognizes councilmember Clendenin.
Mark, I just want to reiterate something.
Yes, sir.
I was walking into church last week after we approved, or maybe the week before anyway, and had a couple of people very upset that they thought that we raised sales tax in the city of Wichita to everybody. So, can we reiterate that no existing businesses, first of all, are affected, taxable businesses, that is?
Correct. This is... I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it's not... No property taxes being affected by this as well.
Correct. The CID is strictly just a sales tax on the property within those boundaries, and there are... It's primarily, aside from maybe the ice sports, it's all undeveloped property there.
Thank you. We... And it's... I just, again, want to reiterate for my own self, this is only within this district, no existing businesses. I had to say that several times, and I think I restored my relationships after that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thanks.
Vice Mayor Claycomb?
Mark, I have a question. Last, when we approved the district the first time, and then the development agreement, the Riverfront Property... The Riverfront Partners did not own the church property. Do they now?
The petition is signed both by the church and the Riverfront Partners on it.
Alright. So that means when they do finish a little transfer...
When they do the transaction, they've already agreed to that as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the bench from staff? See none. Thank you. We'll open up to... No, this one doesn't have public comment, does it? Because it's just a... Because it's just a setting of a... Opening up the floor up to the public for a public comment. See none. Bringing discussion back to the bench. Chair recognizes councilperson Johnson... Excuse me, councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick question. As councilmember Clendenin said, I had a few people wondering, is there an early payoff for CID? Does it have to go 22 years?
It does not have to go to 22 years. It usually sets a maximum of 22 years or until all the eligible costs have been repaid.
And then after that, that sales tax will go away?
It would go away, correct.
Further questions? And sir, just to clarify, this is only setting a public hearing?
That is correct.
As the first step, which is February 11th, so if the public is interested in getting more involved, then they should appear at the hearing.
That is the best opportunity for them to speak, yes.
Perfect. Seeing that there is no questions or people wishing to speak on the list, chair recognizes Vice Mayor Claycomb, who I believe this is in her district.
Actually, just right across the street, and this is where we have all of this.
District 4, I think he's gone.
But we can give it to councilmember Johnson, and then I'll second it.
Johnson would like the floor?
Sure. I would move that we take staff's recommended action.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk, open the roll, and we shall cast our votes. All members had an opportunity to vote. With a unanimous vote of yes, the motion does pass. Thank you. Onward to Madam Clerk.
2020 Traffic Signalization Program.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you this morning is the proposed 2020 Traffic Signalization Program. The adopted CIP includes an ongoing project to signalize major intersections and improve the traffic signals at existing signalized intersections. Typically, we come about our annual list from requests from citizens that see issues throughout the city that we investigate, and we complete a warrant analysis for each signal to make sure that it is warranted based on traffic counts, crashes, presence of pedestrians. There's quite a few. There's eight different warrants that we analyze. A lot of those questions and requests come through councilmembers. We also work with Wichita Police Department on the safety of intersections, and then we've got data that we collect throughout the year that also helps provide information for that. The 2020 program is currently slated to fund traffic signals at the locations you see on this map, for the 37th and Tyler intersection, and the 3500 block of North Rock Road, which is north of K-96. There's a large commercial and retail development on the west side, and then primarily businesses and commercial on the east side, and that's been warranted for some time. Should make a big difference on being able to get traffic in and out of there a little safer, and it will help with the traffic signal at K-96 and Rock Road on the north side to create some gaps there. The other project on the list for 2020 is at I-235 and West Street. We've had a project underway under design for some time to signalize the ramp terminals at that location. It's now become part of a bigger project that KDOT has going forward very soon to rebuild the ramps on the west side of that interchange, so that's going to work really well in conjunction with their project. Sorry, went the wrong way. The adopted CIP includes $525,000 for this project. With that, staff would ask that the council approve the revised budget and adopt the amending resolution, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions from the bench? Chair recognizes councilmember Johnson.
Hey, Gary. So have we ever looked at WSU games in 21st and Hillside and optimizing traffic in that area?
I can't say that we recently have. I've been to a couple of games myself this year and noticed... I think it works pretty well. Obviously, the presence of pedestrians at the time creates a whole different scenario, but that's certainly something that we can do.
Okay. And maybe it's not just the traffic. I had a few people reach out to me about just the congestion there, if there's a way to help ease the flow out, and that might just be a seasonal thing with basketball, but just something to look at.
I think it is. When we... We've had traffic signals in the past close to other venues, not unlike around Intertrust Bank Arena, and we've been able to do things with preemption on those where even Wichita Police Department can help with actuating those signals at certain times to get more traffic through that. That's something we could work with them on.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the bench? See none. We'll open it up to public discussion. See no public discussion. This conversation will come back to the bench. Chair recognizes councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank staff for working with us and the May School District. The 37th and Tyler location has got one elementary school, one middle school, and one high school all adjacent to it. It is the second fastest-growing school district in the state, and they're adding a fifth and sixth grade school on the site, which will be several hundred more students coming to that intersection. So just like councilmember Tuttle has in her district with the growth of southeast, we've seen a demand and issue, and it's been growing every year, so I appreciate the help of May School District on this project and look forward to its implementation.
Other comments or questions? See none, since this doesn't reside solely in a member's district, and since councilmember Frye is enthusiastic about it, I would offer the floor to councilmember Frye for a motion.
Thank you. That's a go, green for go. I make a motion that we approve the revised budget and adopt the resolution.
And the mayor's seconds. Roll will be open. Members cast their vote. With a unanimous vote of yes, the motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Sidewalk Maintenance Program.
Mayor, councilmember Gary Jansen. The next item for you this morning is the 2020 Sidewalk Maintenance Program. This is an annual program for sidewalk repairs that's provided by Charter Ordinance Number 88. The program allows for hiring what is now a yearly on-call contractor for repair of sidewalks. So when we are notified of potential hazards along city sidewalks, we investigate the request and state law, if it meets the requirements to be repaired. State law requires that we provide property owners 30 days to make the repairs from the time that we notify them that they can hire a licensed contractor to make the repairs. So if they do not make that, those repairs within 30 days, our on-call contractor will make the repairs sometime after that point. This is a relatively new process. The sidewalk repair program has been in place for a long time. By Charter Ordinance 88, it has always been the adjacent property owner's responsibility for repair of sidewalk adjacent to their properties, ultimately the cost, even if our contractor makes the repairs. Historically, the way we have done this has resulted in a fairly significant delay in making the repairs, which has added to potential liability for property owners and the city. We are at a point now, we've got a contract out right now to catch up on some final few backlog requests of getting those repairs done, and then pending your approval today, this on-call contractor is ready to move forward, and we should be able to get... We expect to be able to get most repairs, if not all, done within 90 days of the original request, which is a major improvement from what we've done in the past. The adopted CIP includes $500,000 in 2020, with all costs, again, offset by special assessment to adjacent property owners. With that, staff requests that the council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the bench? Chair recognizes councilmember Tuttle.
Gary, thank you for your presentation, and we've had the opportunity to work on this in District 2 several times. So, if a resident has a sidewalk issue and it's their responsibility financially, can you explain some of the options that the city has available to help reduce the burden or to make it easier for the homeowners?
Sure. So, the... Again, if the... If a property owner wants to hire a contractor, a licensed contractor, that is their prerogative, and some people do that. If a sidewalk is offset, a trip hazard only, if there's nothing broken, there's no cracking, no spalling, any drainage issues, they can actually level that sidewalk themselves or find somebody to do that. We are working now to look at a newer process that may help with some of the costs on that too, as opposed to wholesale replacement. And then if they choose to have our contractor do the work, the reason why that becomes feasible for most property owners is the fact that we bid a project that's going to go a year long. It's half a million dollars' worth of work, so by economy of scale, we can provide a usually a lot lower unit cost to make those repairs, and then that cost can be assessed over five years at a typically low interest rate. So, if they want to do that, they can also pay that off prior to paying any interest, but typically, we see a lot of the homeowners choose to accept the five-year assessment, very low interest. Effectively ends up being a very low-interest loan over five years. So, we also have worked with property owners if there's other things at play that is not fully affected by them. Arterial streets has always been a challenge, and we've had some of that in your district also. We have looked to work with property owners, try to offset some of that cost by city at large. Each situation is different, and we evaluate them as they come along, so...
Thank you, and I really appreciate your effort on this. It seems like it might be something just kind of mundane at sidewalks, but walkability is really important to our community, and it provides people access to be able to get where they need to, to move around the city safely. We also know it's an economic development issue. Communities that are more walkable are more likely to encourage economic development, so thank you for all your work on this. It really is important.
Thank you.
Further questions from the bench? See none. We open questions... We welcome questions from the public. See none. Bringing discussion back to the bench. I apologize, but I actually have a question of the conferee. Forgive my lack of understanding of the process, but with the... Our neighbors who fall under the Americans with Disabilities Act protections, is there a process in place if a well-meaning property owner repairs the sidewalk, but that sidewalk is not ADA compliant, which might cut off access for some of the neighbors depending on ADA compliance? Is there a process that we have in place to go out and ensure compliance?
The... So as part... We do not go out and look for sidewalk problems. We've got way too many miles of sidewalks across the city, and so we rely primarily on hearing from citizens, and I think it's a program that's worked pretty well. As part of our process, when we go look at and inspect sidewalk based on those complaints, is ADA compliance. So, some sidewalk panels are... We are marked for removal. We spend quite a bit of time talking to the public because sometimes there's no damage to those, but if there's settlement that's occurred, that's created a situation where there's more allowable cross-slope, those are marked for repair. That's probably one of the biggest questions we get from people. So, part of what we do, the ADA compliance becomes a part of that. I'm not sure that exactly answers your question, but that's one of the primary focuses, other than trip hazards, and missing sidewalk is ADA compliance, and we do that with all of our new construction also at the same time.
So it sounds like if there is someone who has concern with the ADA compliance of a sidewalk, there is a process in which they can reach out to you?
Yes.
And your department, and then we can address it.
Absolutely. Our staff is educated to look at that sidewalk and make sure that it meets all the requirements.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Further discussion? See none, as this doesn't reside in any single person's councilmember's district, and I will make the motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
It's been seconded by the vice mayor. The clerk will open the rolls, and the members will vote. And the motion unanimously passes. Madam Clerk?
Wholesale sanitary sewage treatment services with Oaklawn Improvement District.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Penny Fies, Public Works and Utilities. This item is seeking your consideration for an agreement between the city of Wichita and Oaklawn Improvement District to provide wholesale sanitary sewage services for them. The city of Wichita has a longstanding history with Oaklawn Improvement District. The first time we provided this service was in 1975. The new agreement is, for the most part, wholly unchanged from previous agreements on record. Noteworthy improvement would be the addition of a sanitary flow meter at the point of connection so that we can actually measure their contribution to our sanitary sewer system and bill for actuals. Recently, we've been building based on estimates, and so this would make our billing more precise. It's really the nature of the agreement. We used to... The last agreement expired in 2017, so we're here with a new agreement to get everything back on track. So staff's recommended action is to approve the wholesale sanitary sewage treatment agreement with Oaklawn Improvement District and authorize necessary signatures.
Questions from the bench? See none. Oh, excuse me, I apologize. I might be going a little quick today. Vice Mayor Claycomb?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question. In the agenda report, it says that we've been billing them $8.1 billion gallons since 2002, and the flow meter stopped working, I guess?
Right. We did have a meter in place, and we tried a couple different times to bill with actuals by a meter that had continually failed. So for a while, we were just estimating, and we've really encouraged Oaklawn since that time to purchase and install the meter so that we can bill in actuals. So, right, so before, we were using an estimate based on gallons per capita in that area, and that's how we arrived at that eight... Those 8 million gallons. We are going to monitor this arrangement for the next year to see what actuals are since we've been using an estimate for so long. So if we find the actuals are far off base, we'll correct that with an amendment in the future.
Okay, alright. Because there's nothing in the agreement that I saw that says they have to have a flow meter, right?
There is some language that says that they do have one now, and so before, right, it wasn't like that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions from the bench? See none. Open up for public comment? See none. Discussion will come back to the bench. As the proximity of Oaklawn to the 3rd district, the chair will give the floor to councilmember Clendenin for the honor of making a motion.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would move that we take the staff's recommended action and that the city council approve the wholesale sanitary sewage agreement with Oaklawn Improvement District and authorize the necessary signatures.
Chair will second. It's been a motion and a second, the rolls will be opened and members will vote. Through a result of unanimous yays, the motion does pass, thank you. Madam Clerk.
2020 Railroad Crossing Improvements.
Mayor and councilmembers, Gary Jansen, one more time. The last item I have for you today is an annual program for railroad crossing improvements. The CIP includes funding each year to improve railroad crossings across the city, of which there are approximately 185. Most of the improvements are made by the railroads, and a portion of the cost are reimbursed by the city. Railroad crossings experience substantial wear from both train traffic and vehicular traffic. We have staff that works directly with the multiple railroad companies. This is generally based to also on citizen input. A lot of the information comes through council members, and the railroad tries to find the areas where they're having the most significant problems. It's been pretty successful, and we've got a really good relationship with the railroads to try to make these improvements as they come along. So the adopted CIP includes $150,000 in 2020. Staff assets, council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions from the bench? See none, we'll open up to questions from the public or comments. See none, we'll pull it back to the bench for questions or comments. See none, the chair will make a motion to approve the budget, adopting the resolution, authorizing the necessary signatures, which is the recommended action of staff. And for a second, chair recognizes the Vice Mayor, Claycombe. Motion has been made and seconded, the clerk will open the rolls, members will cast their votes. Their vote of six to zero, the motion passes unanimously, and we're on to the next item. Madam Clerk.
Home Program Funding, Wichita Housing Authority Rental Assistance Demonstration Project.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sally Stang from the Housing and Community Services Department, for the record. Today I have for you is a conditional commitment of home funds for the Wichita Rad Senior Project. This is consistent with the workshop held several weeks ago. So just to recap, the rental assistance demonstration allows us to convert our public housing portfolio to a Section 8 contract. This means we are no longer restricted from securing private sources of capital financing in order to redevelop the properties. And the Wichita Housing Authority Board approved the application for Rad back in 2017. So we, with the conversion, we'll be able to secure the, both public and private sources of capital, including low-income housing tax credits, community development block grants, and home investment partnership funding. The Housing Authority has received financial commitments for Rad in the amount of just over $28,800,000. The full financial stack includes the 4% low-income housing tax credits, housing trust funds from the state of Kansas, private debt tax-exempt bonds, the WHA deferred developer fees, and some Wichita CDBG and Section 108 repayment funds that were approved by the council back in December of 18. The total project cost is a little over $29,900,000, which means we have a financial gap of 1.13 million. The Home Investment Partnership Program is federal entitlement funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We use these funds to finance decent, affordable housing for low-income households and strengthen the ability of state and local governments to provide housing. We leverage private sector participation in the development or rehabilitation of housing, and our 2019-2020 grant was just under $1.4 million. The rehabilitation of the public housing properties is in eligible use under the Home Program regulations, and we propose to use 1.13, just over $1.1 million for the Rad Senior Project. So in order to do that, we can reprogram and commit $301,516,000 of the 2018-2019 year funding, and then $406,217 over the next two years. The home funding will be provided in the form of an interest-bearing loan payable from residual receipts, and the funding agreement would be prepared by staff and brought back to the council for approval at a future date. At this point, the conditional commitment allows us to move forward with other funding commitments. It's a chicken and the egg scenario. We can't secure the other forms of financing unless they see a commitment from the home funds, but we can't by regulation move forward with the loan agreements for the home funds until we've secured the other financing and completed a subsidy layering review. So at this point, we're recommending the issuance of a conditional commitment of Home Investment Partnership Program funding for $1,113,950 for the Wichita Housing Authority's Rad Project, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Questions from the bench? Vice Mayor Claycombe.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand this. This gap financing that we're using, reprogramming the home funds, so what's the trade-off? What were we going to spend that money on?
Sure, the $301,000 we still had in the coffers from 2018-2019 were unused, unallocated program funds. From the future, obviously, we usually fund infill development and down payment assistance, so that would still leave just over $900,000 anticipated for those funding mechanisms in the future.
And these are loans that will be paid back? So does the money come back and go back into the home fund?
Absolutely, so as the payments come back, they come back as program income and then are put back out into the community for appropriate uses.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from the bench? See none, we open it up to the public, public comment or questions? See none, discussion will come back to the bench, further questions? Is it appropriate to make a motion? I don't believe this resides in one person's district, and thus the chair will make the motion to accept staff's recommendation. Will there be a second by the Vice Mayor?
Second.
It's been a motion and a seconded, the clerk will open the rolls, and members will cast their votes. With the yays having six and a nays zero, the motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, one second. I wanted to, there's no objection, take a point of personal privilege. We have students here, I believe. Just wanted to recognize the students and thank you for coming. Are you students? Welcome, we're glad you guys are here.
Where are you from?
Where are you from? May's High School.
They were here for the traffic signal.
You're here for the traffic signal, apparently.
You're welcome.
Not the same school, but close enough.
Okay, I was going to say, did Councilmember Fry know you guys were here, and he said all that nice stuff? Thank you, guys, for attending. If there's anything we could do for you, please let us know. Back to the printed order of business, the chair recognizes staff.
CON 2019-34, Conditional Use Amendment to CON 2004-30 to expand area for vehicle sales on properties owned limited commercial, generally located on the east side of South Broadway Avenue and within one-quarter mile south of East Harry, 1728 South Broadway.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Scott Knabel with the Planning Department, for the record. The conditional use before you today is a request to expand an existing conditional use in limited commercial zoning for outdoor vehicle and equipment sales on property between Funston and O.C., just south of Harry on the east side of Broadway. The application area is outlined in blue on the slide that you have before you. The existing vehicle sales lot is outlined in black within that blue box. The applicant, you can see the aerial picture here. In 2004, a conditional use was approved for vehicle sales on the parcel in the middle of that red box shown on the aerial, and the applicant is desiring to expand the vehicle sales to the north and the south parcels. It does appear from our search of records that at least at some points in the past, vehicle sales have occurred on the proposed expansion area, but aren't presently. The application area, as is shown on this map, is located within the South Central Plan area, which will be an important component of my presentation here in a minute. The, this is the site plan that is shown. The site has an existing building, and then the rest of the lot, as you saw from the aerial, is paved with concrete and is surrounded by wood fence. This is looking at the site. It also has, the site also has the required rail barrier to prevent vehicles that are displayed for sale from encroaching upon the sidewalk, which is what leads staff to believe that at least at some point in the past there has been vehicle sales that have occurred on the site in the expansion area. This is looking directly at the site from the sidewalk on Broadway, and then this is looking at the site from the vacant property that's located to the north of the property. The, this section of Broadway contains a mixture of uses. There are a number of residential properties along Broadway, and in fact, Broadway was historically developed as a residential corridor back in the 1890s, 1880s. Much of that use, of course, has changed over time. Much, much of that occurred when the corridor became U.S. Highway 81, and a number of hotels, restaurants, and vehicle service stations were developed along the corridor. And in the 50s, the community changed the zoning of the entire corridor to the limited commercial zoning classification, which was shown on the zoning map that I showed previously. This particular case has had a number of considerations. The first of which occurred at the District Advisory Board on October 2nd of 2019. At that hearing, the District Advisory Board for District Three recommended that the request be denied. There were a number of public attending the meeting, and DAB members as well, that spoke in opposition to the request citing the South Central Neighborhood Plan, which I discussed previously. That plan specifically calls out that the additional use of vehicle sales lots along the South Broadway corridor is a highly undesirable use due to the high number of existing used car lots, many of which are blighted properties, many of which also are like this one, sitting vacant, indicating that there is sufficient land zoned for that use in the neighborhood. The Planning Commission then considered the item on October 10th, and it recommended approval to the City Council by a vote of six to five. So it was barely passed, the Planning Commission. The City Council then considered the item on November 12th and deferred action until December 3rd. At the December 3rd meeting, the City Council then returned the item to the Planning Commission for reconsideration in light of the fact that the Planning Commission had recently adopted an update to the South Central Neighborhood Plan, which of course this City Council recently adopted as well. Metropolitan Area Planning Commission then reconsidered the item on December 19th. There was one resident that spoke in opposition to the request at that, at that meeting, and primarily cited the large number of existing used car lots on this corridor and the South Central Neighborhood Plan recommending against this type of use in the corridor. Planning Commission then recommended approval, again, upon reconsideration to the planning, to the City Council on a vote of seven to four, established a number of conditions, which were actually included also in the original recommendations, standard conditions for vehicle sales in LC. There were no protest petitions received, so the application can be approved based on receipt of a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission with a simple majority vote. Or the application can be denied with the City Council making alternative findings. Some of the things in the record include the existing large number of vehicle sales lots along this corridor, indicating that there is potentially sufficient land already zoned for this use in this corridor. The fact that the LC zoning does allow a number of other types of commercial uses, and of course, the South Central Neighborhood Plan identifying that this is a least desirable land use for the corridor. Remind council that the City Council Policy 9 indicates that the Planning Commission is the public hearing for such items, and unless the council votes to authorize it, there are no public comments on this item.
Vice Mayor Claycombe.
Scott, can you go back to the photos of the, one of the photos of the? Yeah, that's a great one, because in the MAPC minutes, it says that there's an existing car lot on the center of the application area. It doesn't look like it's...
That's correct, it's not operating presently.
Okay.
The applicant, actually, the way this, the way this came about was the applicant, a new operator came, filed to the state for a license for the entire site, and upon review by our staff, we indicated that while the site looks like it's an existing contiguous site for vehicle sales, the north and south portions of the property actually do not have a conditional use, and so that's what triggered this application.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I appreciate the presentation and the information. I just want to confirm, I know that in the staff report, it said that there were no protest petitions were received, but ample notice was, was sent out, the residents, if they wanted to do any kind of protest petition, certainly could have, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have a question, just, just a comment. I am supportive of this because it's limited commercial, which allows other opportunities for development. I personally don't care to see another car lot along Broadway in that area, but this allows more opportunity for other development, so I will support it on that condition.
Other questions or comments from the bench? Questions or comment from the public? I don't think this is one where I could do that. Luckily, everyone's left, so no one's putting me in an awkward position of having to tell them not to walk down here. So we're bringing that discussion right back to the bench where it belongs, and it would be appropriate to make a motion, I would ask since this was an ongoing discussion, and I am new to the bench, that someone else would begin with a motion. Chair recognizes Councilmember Clendenin.
Thank you, Mayor. So having a very rough time with this one, knowing the, the opposition based on the neighborhood plan to any more car lots, this is a special exception, though they would like to operate a car lot on it. As you can see by the picture, they would like to be operating, but they can't because their existing business, it's contiguous space here. And so knowing that the neighborhood doesn't want another car lot, believe me, I understand, but at the same time, this being contiguous, car lot already, I'm going to move that we take the staff's recommended action and approve. This will probably be one of the very few times that I will make a motion, though, that goes against the neighborhood wishes and the brand-new neighborhood plan. I think they did an amazing job putting something together that mobilizes citizens to take ownership of their community. My hope is, is the businesses will as well, and that even the property owner of this property will take it upon themselves to spruce it up and make it a point of pride for the community.
Vice Mayor Claycombe.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. The clerk will open up the roll, members will take the vote. The result is six yays to zero nays, and thus the motion does pass, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Whipple and all council members to attend the events for Local Government Day to Pika, Kansas, January 22nd, 2020.
Any discussion? Excuse me, councilperson Tuttle.
Thank you, I just want to go on record and say that tomorrow will be a really exciting day for the City of Wichita.
the City of Wichita, thanks to the hard work of staff and our community partners. Back in June, we were honored with being one of 10 All-American cities in the nation, which is something that we need to continue to, the momentum and the pride. We were selected as an All-American city for a reason, and that's something really special. And so, tomorrow, we will have a resolution, and we've been working with our folks at the State House. And I want to give a special shout-out to Assistant City Manager Dante Martin, who really championed the entire process all the way to this end, where tomorrow, we'll be traveling to Topeka. So, hopefully, we'll be coming back with a nice plaque or a piece of paper or something, and we'll be able to share it with the rest of the council, the mayor, and staff, and also the community, and plan for more future celebrations. So, look forward to a great day tomorrow in Topeka.
Other comments? As someone who worked very hard to not have to drive back to Topeka, I will, however, support the enthusiasm of the former council member, and I will make a motion to accept.
Second.
Clerk will open the roll. Members will take a vote. The motion passes six to zero, and this is where we'll be traveling to Topeka tomorrow. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
So, councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, we had a wonderful MLK celebration this weekend, yesterday, and as well as the National Day of Racial Healing today, but we had some great celebrations. Nice, very cold parade with a northern breeze in our face from Christian Faith Center over to Chester Lewis Reflection Park, but great turnout, great events, great celebration at Dr. Tenny. Just wanted to shout everybody out on that.
Further comments? I'd just like to publicly thank councilmember Johnson for the invitations to the MLK celebrations throughout the community. As someone who's been here for less than a week, it was great to be able to rely on my colleague to make sure that the mayor was where he needed to be. So, thank you for that, Mr. Johnson, or councilmember Johnson. If there are no further comments, I do rise to a part of inquiry with staff. Following this meeting, do we close out this meeting, and then I make the motions for, that were given, and then those will be a new meeting, or is those continuation of this meeting?
This meeting will merely be recessed for an executive session. At the conclusion of executive session, the meeting will be formally closed out here in chambers.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So, with that, we will be going, the meeting, the public meeting will be recessed into executive session if these motions are to pass. So, I move that the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to receive information on the acquisition of properties pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. The clerk will open the roll.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, there is a second page to that motion. The executive session is required, and we need to cite the reason.
Of course. The executive session is required to protect the city's rights to the confidentiality of its negotiation position and the public interest, and thank you, staff. There has been a motion and a second. Clerk will open the roll. Members will cast their votes. The vote of six yays and no nays, that motion passes. I would like to take a moment to motion for an executive session directly following the first 15 minutes. I move that the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to receive information on settlement negotiations on environmental remedies sites pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, potential litigation, legal advice, and the executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interests. This motion requires a second.
Second.
The motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Claycomb. Clerk will open the rolls. Members will cast their votes. With the result of six yays to zero nays, the motion does pass, and we are in executive session.
And now, Mr. Mayor, if you would announce the timing for each session with 15 minutes for each one. We will recess now at 10:17, so the first meeting would, the first executive session would last for 15 minutes.
Of course. In the interest of transparency, it is now 10:17, and the first executive session will recess for only 15 minutes, in which the second executive session will also last only 15 minutes. Thank you.
And we will return then at 10:47.
And we'll return then at 10:47. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your pen collection. Oh, I need to send you a...